Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, February 25th, 2021, beginning at 7:05 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on Thursday, February 11th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next, on our agenda are our discussion items. Our first discussion item tonight is the proposed updates to the future land use map dated 2008 and the process and timeline to receive input from the public and city boards and committees, including city council regarding the updates. Aubrey?
So, the planning subcommittee has been working on the future land use map. And we've outlined or provided an outline with kind of a timeframe to get this through all the city boards and commissions and council and P&amp;Z and the public and everything to hopefully adopt the new map by the end of the year. So, the schedule, the timeline was in your backup material. And then, we kind of just wanted to start the discussion and get some input from the rest of the commission tonight. So, I'm just going to hit the highlights of the major changes that were made to the whole map. And then, Mark's going to go through the details, changes that we would like your input on regarding the changes. So, the last map was adopted in 2008. And with the comp plan, we do need to establish a plan for updating this map in the future. Like, if we want to update, you know, review and update every five years or something. So, that's just something to think about, not anything we have to decide tonight. And then, we did change the color scheme of the map with the convention, the color convention of the American Planning Association. So, the color actually have all the codes for the colors in your backup material, not that it matters, but we'll use those codes to do all of our maps so that our colors are consistent. And then, we did add a note that state law actually says, it doesn't say you have to have it on the map, but it says you can have it, which it says, basically, "A comprehensive plan shall not constitute zoning regulations or determine zoning district boundaries." Basically, it's just a clarification that this is not the zoning that's on the ground. This is future land use planning, what we want in the future, not what's on the ground right now. So, with that, I will let Mark go through the detailed areas.
Yeah, and let me calibrate you guys really quick and apologize to my other subcommittee members. This one snuck up on me. I forgot that we put this on the agendas. Typically, I would have sent something out to you guys to review. So, interrupt, I know you guys had some good input when we were talking about these. So, just jump in when you have something you want to say, and I'll do better next time. Make sure you guys get involved. For the most part, though, what I did is I took presentation material that we already had in the backup material and put it in a side-by-side comparison. So, there's a couple of those properties. We had six major items that we wanted to cover. And on some of those, I just put them side-by-side. Now, the color changes kind of throw you off a little bit, but you can see what some of those changes were. So, there's a presentation, I'm assuming someone's going to pull it up. So, there were 11 major changes in the backup material. You can go to the next slide, and I'm summarizing everything here. Aubrey mentioned the first two bullets, six of those things we wanted some input on, or at least to communicate to you guys what the recommendation we were going to be prepared to bring forward were. So, I'll step through the first few of these. The rest of them Aubrey can talk to, or we can cover them however quickly you want. And if this view doesn't work for you guys, we can also pull up the backup material where she's got the big map with the arrows on it to talk about them, because that'll give you the larger picture of what the landscape looks like. So, next slide, please. Okay, so, number one was the Panhandle. So, what you can see is just on that, on that tier for 2351, just that first part of the easement is what we've changed. For the rationale was because we wanted to make sure that it was zoned appropriately for retail. So, don't let the colors throw you off. Like I said, the main point is the red, and you can see how we made those changes. So, there's not much else for me to say here. Do you guys have any other comments?
I have one question that I had, I was going to bring up later, but it's the perfect time to bring it up. And Aubrey, thank you for explaining that this isn't zoning. But if I'm reading that correctly, like, for example, Timber, the Timber Creek Golf Club is shown as a park. It's green. So, it's not, it's just, it's a little funny looking when you look at it and go, wait a second. But again, your point, so you made earlier is that this isn't representative of zoning. It's really more about future. So, some of the existing zoning may not get displayed correctly?
Right. It's use. So, the use of the golf course is like open space or parkland, or, I mean, it's green space. So, it's, that's why that one is green. So, and yes, some of the zoning that is on the zoning, on the official zoning map is not going to be what's on this map.
Right, right. You're trying to do two different functions. But we all know that this map gets brought up. Anytime we go to look to change something, people always bring up, well, wait, the future land use map says this.
Well, and this should be used as a guide to make our zone change decisions. So, we want to go through this and make this as good as we can. It's not going to be perfect, and we can always change this, you know?
It's a living document.
Yes, yeah.
So, it's more important to make sure we're accurate on the future. What's existing isn't that critical that it's, you know, 100%. We'd like it to be as right as possible.
Right.
Is that it?
Yeah, and I can give you a little bit of backup. When the commission did the 2008 future land use map, these special, special interest areas, non-residential with commercial or industrial emphasis, basically, the discussion at that time was, we don't really know what we want out there, but if somebody has a great idea, they could come to us. And so, that's why all those, these special study areas were put on the map. We can still consider unique, you know, ideas when they come to us, but I just thought it was better to go back and actually identify, you know, what you, like, I mean, we've always said the Panhandle's going to be industrial, you know, there's limited utilities out there. You know, it's a great place for business parks, you know, warehouse kind of uses. And so, I'm like, I just thought we should just put that back on the map, you know, and have our retail corridor that we've, you know, that we always talk about and go for.
Right, and that's building out. I mean, that's what's happening.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you.
So, if I could just add on to what Joe was saying, or just clarify it in my own mind. If, for instance, the golf course went out of business and that land was available, we would say our preference is to incorporate that into the park and make a bigger park. It's not our preference to put single-family homes over there. Now, not to say it would happen, but it does show what we prefer to have going forward. Am I reading that right? This is kind of a guide of, you know, you don't always get what you want, but this is what we want.
You don't want some open spaces, not necessarily a public park, but open spaces.
Yeah, and the floodway and like flood zones back there kind of limit what could be developed back there. But you do have a good point that, and I will say for the parks and we just put all the parks as parks.
Sure. That's where we are, and that's where we want to keep them.
Right.
Yeah, but what I'm, and I'm reading here is this is kind of a, you know, if we have our druthers, this is where we would put commercial, and this is where we'd put residential, and this, this is where we put parks.
Which, and...
And it doesn't mean it's a park now, because it isn't. The golf course is close, but it's not.
Yes, no, that's a very good point. And, I mean, the city doesn't own that property, so we don't have any
Right.
...control over keeping it a park in the future. So, if we, we might need to change that to industrial.
I wrote it down as an action.
Or mixed, could you do like a mixed use? I saw that you used that in a couple places.
Um, I would rather reserve the mixed use for the downtown district. That's where they're concentrated.
Yeah, I think a mixed use is kind of a, just a catch-all. But I think here, if we really want it to be a park or open space, then leave it like you have it. If we really want to put industrial there, if we had our druthers, you know, if it became up for grabs and was going to be changed, it's just, it's where we, we want it.
Well, you guys, y'all talk about it and talk with the subcommittee, I think, and come back to something that, but that, that just, I just noted that when I looked at it, the same thing Rich did, that that just looks odd.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I didn't mention it on my opening slide, but any changes that we take or considerations, we'll put that into our disposition matrix or something for the next revision, but I know you have a comment, so.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to, I know it's in the summary, but just to reiterate, as we were going through it, it wasn't based off of desires only. So, we took a bunch of different things into account in terms of population, target goals, the comprehensive plan, this being a future guide for achieving all those goals that we've laid out in the comprehensive plan. So, some of them was like technical flooding, things like that. Some were what makes the most sense, what roads are they on? Others are, well, we need to limit maybe the amount of households, because then we start getting too much on population. So, we're trying to find that happy medium and using different reasons. So, it wasn't just a desire thing, like, oh, we want that to be a park one day. It might have been for multiple reasons. We want that to be a park, because if we put a whole huge neighborhood, then the population goes way up, and it also floods, we can't do that. So, there's all sorts of considerations that go into it.
Good. So, as we mature this larger effort for the comprehensive plan, if there's direction that we receive from council or otherwise, and we're not so much worried about that 50,000 resident thing, then maybe that changes our perspective. But certainly, we were trying to make sure we kept an 80/20 and not go over 50,000. So, that was guiding our decisions, right or wrong now. So, we documented that as part of our assumptions, and if they're the wrong assumptions, then we, we go back and reevaluate.
Do we think it's actual feasible to keep it below 50,000? I thought that was kind of a, not much of a chance.
Um, I think our build-out population right now is probably 56,000 or 57,000. Once the 2020 census data comes out, we can kind of refresh our calculations and see where we're at. And then, also, I did, this is a really just first rough draft of this map, just to get discussion going. I would like to do some more cleanup on this and actually, because I, we did a developed and undeveloped acreage map, and so, we determined that we have 1,900 acres that's undeveloped. And, but that is a very, like, I actually went through like parcel by parcel and took tracks off of that that are detention ponds and parks and all that. And I would like the opportunity to do the same with this. Like, right now, detention ponds for subdivisions are lumped in with single, like, low-density, single fam, you know, low-density residential zoning. So, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison to run those acreage calculations now, if that makes any sense. So, I'd like, I mean, we're going to keep working on this, just to, you know, just keep it going.
Yeah, and don't take anything, at least that I'm saying, as critical. I'm just, had questions, and I think you've made a really great first step at this, huge first step.
No, and it's, I mean, having all, it takes all of our eyes, because we all see things differently, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's true. So, critical's good. I mean, we can take it. So, this was number one, so this is the recommendation. So, another, unless there are other things for us to consider for that zoning that we put for change to industrial, then, then we can move on to the next one. So, this is number three that was on the big map. So, this is Winding Way and 518, which is the Todd property.
Yep.
So, then, the colors kind of play with you here a little bit, too. But when we looked at it, a lot of it's, a lot of it's, a lot of it's in a floodway as well. So, here, we thought, when you take a look at everything else that's around it, so, this was our recommendation for the rezoning. Not sorry, not the rezoning. Gosh, gotta be careful with my words there, with what we document on the future land use map.
And the turquoise outline on the property to the left of the subject property is the downtown, the outline of the downtown district. So, this property is just on the border of the downtown, but not in the district.
Yeah, so this one, this one we debated quite a bit, because there, there could be some other commercial-type endeavors that you could put there, but...
At one time, I had heard Alton was thinking about some commercial-type endeavors of hotels or some kind of nice facility. I would hate to discourage that by making the single-family residential. That's my only comment.
Okay.
If that's really viable and possible, I...
But, but nothing would preclude...
No, it's not binding, but, but I don't want to discourage it. And this is kind of a, you know, where does it need to go? And I would like to kind of say it would be preferred to go there instead of more houses near the floodplain.
Um, yeah, you know, when we kicked that around, I think our concern was the next neighborhood over, with not having, making sure that it was the right future land use to make sure that you wouldn't have, you know, all the people in that neighborhood coming out saying, hey, what are you, what are you doing putting a hotel right next to my neighborhood? So...
Yeah, yeah, and there's traffic issues and all that kind of thing, too. Just, it just, you know, if you had your druthers, what would you, what would you want to have there?
That, this is our recommendation.
That's fair, my fair.
And a lot of that, too, was the creek that runs right there. And if you're familiar with the property, it drops way off and it's super low right there. So, what you can put there, we definitely took into consideration, and in no way do I want to discourage anything from going there. But I think with our recommendation, anybody that looks at it's going to say, yeah, that's probably about the only thing that can go there.
Yeah, I think their thinking was if you built it up, then you'd have a nice view of the creek, and you'd be watching the water from your hotel room, and, and there were some things, they would, you know, there's a lot of different ways to go.
Absolutely.
So...
Yeah, so that's why these big six are here, is to get comments like that. So, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Next, please. Okay, so this is on the far eastern boundary, so this butts up right against League City. When we were kicking this in around, Aubrey took the action and went and looked at what the future land use map was for League City to make sure that that was going to be part of our decision space. So, once we looked at that, we really confirmed that we thought that retail was going to be the, the pieces that needed to go on that frontage. Everything else can, for the most part, stay the same. I get that right?
Uh-huh. Yeah, League City's future land use map, which I included in your backup material, had retail on the front and single or low-density residential in the back as well.
And you can't, I can't tell from the lines, I think what we marked red was where actual parcels there, right? Is that the right word, parcels?
Um, I think we did the 500-foot...
Okay, that was a 500-foot there as well?
And it matches League City's. So, they have 500-foot commercial that runs along 528 there, and then, we just matched it, and then behind it, just like they did, is where we put family home.
And there's already residential between the two red spots, so that's why that stays yellow along the freeway?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Correct, that's, that's there, yeah.
Yeah, the brown on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
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 So, number six, so really, really, it was just number six that we wanted to talk to you guys about. Number seven, we can kick around if we need to. I mislabeled the bottom right. So, the, the top right call-out box and the bottom right call-out box are both number six. So, that's the Georgetown property and the area surrounding it. So, when we took a close look at that, obviously, we know Georgetown is going in, so there's no reason to leave it as special study. And then, what I, and this was something that I had personally brought up, so I'll own this, in case it's a horrible idea. But once we put that there, when we realized that we have industrial where the gun range is, and are we really doing the right thing if we're going to put industrial right next to residential without any buffer? So, that was just something, if we're going to be across the board consistent with how we tried to do buffers, that was something that we wanted to put on the table for us to kick around tonight. So, I'm, I'm not sure if we made a decision on changing. What you see is pink on the top there, but certainly, we wanted to put it out there for discussion. Anything else you guys wanted to add from the subcommittee or Aubrey before we get comments?
I think we do have a property owner that's interested in developing the front part of that pink. It doesn't really look pink on your screen, but between, in front of the gun range, and they're looking at doing a business park. So, business park is a little less intrusive on adjacent residential. It basically requires 25-foot setbacks on all sides of the property. So, the buildings are kind of in the middle, and so, that lessens the effect on the adjacent residential property. So, if we wanted to change that to business park, that might, that was one idea.
The whole pink? Make it all business park?
We could.
Okay. So, now we, now we kick it around.
The pink area is, is all the gun range right now?
Uh, just the back, about the back half or back third.
The front half is just undeveloped?
Yeah.
There's a, yeah, there's a tower there as well, on the left-hand side where that diamond is and that small parcel. In the white on the left-hand side, that's where that communications tower antenna is.
Got it.
And the gun range is just the turquoise, on the left map, just the turquoise there. Is that accurate?
Okay, I got you, thank you.
Actually, I think the tower, the tower's north of the pink, because the brown is the old special study area, and now it's pink and yellow.
Huh?
Where the communication tower is, I need a mouse.
They're different scales.
Yeah, the road, well, maybe...
They're different scales.
Where's the road to get to the...
So, the gun, the gun range is actually south of the teal part on the left. See the long rectangular tract?
Yes.
That's the gun range.
Oh, okay, well, then, we were...
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, we were looking, we might have been, so we'll go back and revisit this one, maybe we were looking at the wrong piece.
But is there any reason to keep it all one classification? Kind of, could you make the front part on the highway more commercial?
And that's consistent with what we've done along the major thoroughfares.
Right. I mean, there's no reason to keep it all one thing or another. You could break it up a little bit, and just surrounding the, the gun range, maybe that's business park or something like that.
Okay.
It's just a, just a thought, I haven't thought it through.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go back and revisit this, especially to make sure we're looking at the right area. Because we, we don't want to give the wrong impressions here either, so we're careful there. I was pretty sure, but, yeah, I'm trying to look at, if those are roads, well, there's a road there somewhere. We'll figure it out. We'll report back to you guys. I can verbalize that at the next meeting or after we have our next subcommittee meeting.
Those two lines, side-by-side, that line, one of them shifted up.
Oh, you think that's what's throwing us off? Yeah, the scale, the scale was off a little bit.
You can see the angle on the, or the cutout on the right?
Yeah.
Kind of where they fall.
Yeah.
So, so the Friendswood line stops right there at the, the whatever, the sand pit, right?
On the right-hand side.
The red dotted.
Yeah.
That's a sand pit, though, right there.
Yeah, on the, the right, like, back behind, like, on the right-hand side, yes. Think that maybe where all the dump trucks are going.
That's Rob.
Okay. So, some more work on portion of number six. Aubrey, did you want to talk number seven, since it's on the screen? That wasn't a heavy hitter for us, but you can, since it's up, maybe they can...
Um, yeah, we just changed the Georgetown property back to single fam, or low-density residential. It looks like they're moving forward with that project. And then, we put the, I think they are planning on doing a little bit of, like, retail on their frontage. So, we just changed that little red piece up there to retail.
But they're not planning on putting it along 528 up into the right there? That's going to be residential houses right on 528?
Yeah, I think there's, so, there's actually the creek or canal that goes through there. That's not all usable land.
I see.
At, at one time, they were talking about dedicating some of that to the city as parkland. So...
Anything they don't want, yeah, I understand.
So, their primary entrance is actually going to be in Alvin.
Yep.
And then, their secondary entrance is that little curve and that red piece is their secondary entrance that's coming in.
It's, in general, my, my view is that any place that's undeveloped along the major thoroughfares should be retail, if possible. And that's undeveloped along the major thoroughfare. And so, but if it's not usable, then it doesn't matter what we put it as.
Okay.
By the way, that's, you've already done that mostly, from what I can tell, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, that was the goal, but yeah, if there's an opportunity where some of that yellow is, then we can change that, too, sure. Okay. Um, I don't think number two was, I think that might have covered everything that was the big ones, so let me go back to my slides here.
Yeah, this was part of the special study area out in the Panhandle before. It was that orangey color. And Harris County's actually purchased all that property out there, so we just changed it to open space, because it's not going to be developed now.
Is that detention?
Um, it probably will be some sort of like inline detention in the future.
And that's where the paintball?
Yeah, that's where the paintball was.
Well, since we're here, one of the other questions I had, at what point do things like this and the Forest Bend detention, I know they're, they're being discussed, they're not done, when does that show up as detention?
Uh, if the city or the county owns the property, then we've labeled them either as park, public buildings, which is the blue, the bright blue, and then, all the, like, regional detention or open space is the lighter blue.
Okay, so this, so this one, you're changing to open space to kind of reflect the thinking of what's going to happen. Would you, would you, would you think to consider doing that for that Forest Bend area now, while we're having the map open and doing things? Or would you just leave it alone for now until, see how that, where that goes?
May it show us park?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think it's parkland now, so...
I, I just was trying to draw a distinction between the two, they're very similar, but that's, it's, it's not a big deal, it's just something I noticed. Something to consider, that's all.
The other thing, I had two colors, which I think you'll see on the color scheme, which we didn't do on the map, was public parks and private parks. And so, that might be another question, like, if we want to make, you know, put all the subdivision parks as a little bit lighter green, and then, the public parks as the darker green? I don't know if that really serves a purpose or not, but...
But it's backed, it's, it's not, it's their use, not their zoning or anything like that, but...
But if we did, you at least see ownership, like, what the city owns, and what, you know, we don't necessarily own all the parks, so...
Right.
But, and the open space is something that I would like to do a little bit of work on and clean up a little bit. One of the other things we did change from the 2008 map to this map is actually label, or all the buyout lots are actually identified on this map, whereas before, I don't think they were actually, like, identified as buyouts, because that property...
I think that's good, I noticed it, yeah.
That property's undevelopable. So, I think it was, it puts it, I mean, it paints a good picture on, you know, how much, how many buyouts we've done.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
And...
Take, take a look at, is it Frenchman's Creek? Is that the name of the subdivision back at the back of Holly Ranch?
Mm-hmm.
That's development. Take a look at some, I think some of those have been bought out, right?
I think they may be in process.
Okay, still not done, okay.
Yeah, Avran's working with Fire Marshal's Office, and we actually have a layer now for all of our buyout lots, and it's, we actually have them categorized, like, which storm they were, or which, like, program they were bought out with.
Okay, I, I just was asking, because I noticed some, I noticed all the buyouts, and Okay, I, I just was asking, cause I noticed some, I noticed all the buyouts, I thought that was great, then I looked over there and said, wait. So they're in progress or processed, okay, got it.
I have a few comments to look at. On, um, Baker Road, there's a section that's, uh, the dark blue was, which is a public and semi-public. I believe that's just a detention pond. Um, so should be light blue. Um, and this, this is more just a question. Uh, Mustang Road next to the high school, did the high school just purchase, uh, a few houses there? Did they purchase that whole road of houses? I wasn't sure.
They purchased what's blue, I confirmed that with them. And that's all they plan on purchasing.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next was, uh, number five, which was. Which was on our list for discussion.
I think this one I may have changed after, um, our meeting. Um, the, where Ranch Express is being built, the gas station down close to West Ranch. Um, we actually did the zone change for them, to change them to neighborhood commercial. And so we had talked previously, and I'd forgotten about that, um, to change just the rest of that, um, section of land to retail.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, that was already done. So that was a decided forest thing.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm glad you did that, there, there was a residential right next to it that said, you know, hey, they objected at the time when we changed it. And we said, really, eventually you guys should be commercial, that's really where the money would be for your property and the value is. And so I, I put reflecting that in the map is good catch.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, next one please. Okay, yeah, this was on our list, so number eight, which is, oh, so this was another, this was another frontage decision that we had made. So you'll see a couple in these areas, I think there's a, there's a few more in the major changes. Um, but you can see that it was all zoned one and we took the first 500 feet there, um, consistent with what, uh, we've done in other areas, so. Uh, certainly from my perspective, there wasn't much thought to put in here, but, uh, if anyone else has comments to make on why we had the rationale, please speak up.
And we carried the 500-foot buffer down the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard as well. Um, you kind of see the clip of it on the left-hand side, so down both, because. Friendswood Lakes Boulevard will eventually be extended, uh, the other direction, so hopefully keep our frontage over there.
Right.
And that's across from the retaining ponds, the part, that sliver?
Uh, yes. Yeah, across the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, there are regional detention ponds back there.
And some of the reasons, so we could do like a 300-foot or 500-foot, and we're kind of going, looking at what's back there already. What size homes are you gonna put back there, are you gonna put estates, smaller ones? And then trying to coordinate that with our 80/20, trying to coordinate that with population. And so 500 seemed like a better buffer along that major thoroughfare.
Okay, the rest of them are nine, 10, and 11, and I believe those were, um. Not controversial decisions for us, from what I recall. Aubrey, did you want to touch on them?
Yeah, so, let's see, nine. The property back behind the, uh, behind the White House, so the White House is on the, the piece that has the driveway going in and it's the tract.
Right.
All of that property is owned by the same property owner. Um, and the light yellow on the previous map was another special study area. Um, with commercial emphasis, non-residential, and so we actually changed it back to low-density residential.
Sorry, quick question, I drove out, I was looking at this and I couldn't figure out, I couldn't place that, and I drove out there to look at it. That one yellow strip that connects the, on the old, older map or on both maps. The White House is all south of that, that's, that's the border of that property, correct? Or of that?
Or is that the driveway?
That's the driveway to the house.
Is it? Cause I, I went and looked and I, it didn't look like, it looked like it might've been just to the north of it, but.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll look, I'll look again.
That should be the driveway to the house.
So we've zoned like that, the, the, so the, the, the fields in the front on either side, we, we, we're future land use for commercial.
Those are, and they are already zoned CSC.
And then the, and then the driveway back to the house, and then that house would've faced the back of those.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Which at one time, they were talking about doing, I mean, it, you know, it's ideas and stuff, you know, property owners that kind of try to think of ways to develop their property. At one time, there was a mention of doing like one-acre lots with like, um, horse, like horse stables and stuff out there for, as a community. Um, cause there were already barns, there is one house out there with barns and, um. So I don't think it would be unreasonable to expect that the back of that property would develop as residential. And then, you know, possibly have the frontage.
So I'll, I'll add one other note here, part of our, um, committee discussion was to, uh, reach out to some of the other entities within the city. Uh, so this property was part of the CDC's 528 strategy that they did years back, five, six years ago. Uh, and, and this, at least this one is consistent with what was in that 528 strategy, so. Um, you'll see in our schedule that we've got a plan going forward and, and a handshake with CDC to make sure we're in alignment with that strategy. Um, is one of the, uh, reality checks that we'll do.
I think the, the number 10 was the, is the 25 acres. Um. Uh, CVS Pharmacy owns the corner, the corner tract, it's kind of outlined in white. Uh, CVS owns that, so eventually that will probably be a CVS. Um, and then the rest of that tract is zoned CSC already. Um, I mean, there's, again, there's been mention of wanting to do residential development on this whole tract, and we've told them no. Um, but I don't know if we're, we have a lot of commercial. Potential commercial property on 528, and we've got a lot of, you know, commercial property that's been sitting vacant for, you know, years and years. So I don't, I mean, then there's the question, you know, how much retail or commercial can we actually support? Um, that's why we kind of just stick with the three to 500-foot depth on the commercial, because. We typically aren't, um, don't get the anchor stores that are gonna use up the deep acreage, um, so. Uh, that's kind of, you know, the thinking.
Seems like a reasonable compromise.
I support that.
Aubrey, that's just on the other side from the White House Ranch Route?
Uh-huh. And again, I mean, like I said, if somebody comes in with a great idea, I mean, we're not, you know, we're open to, you know, creative development. And we can always, once we get this new map updated. Um, if the zone change doesn't comply with this map, then we'll include a change to this map with the zone changes to try and keep this map more relevant.
Is there a current plan for, is that Narnia Way to connect to, uh, the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard?
Um, I don't think it's on our major thoroughfla- thoroughfare plan as a required connection. Um, so it just depends on, you know, how that develops.
Aubrey, do you know if there are any plans for the White House?
I don't.
Is this the last of the?
Uh, there's one.
Um, this one I kind of changed at the last minute to, um, the, the downtown district boundary, um, is the light blue. And we have several properties that still aren't zoned downtown. Um, but the ultimate goal is for all those, you know, properties to be zoned downtown. So we went ahead and changed all those within the boundary to the mixed-use, um, purple color for downtown. Except the schools and, uh, City Hall and Stevenson Park we just left.
So the only other thing left to cover, if we wanted to cover it, was, uh, schedule.
Yes.
It lays out a timeline between now and November, um, with the next step for us to start meeting with other. Inner-city and intracity subcommittees. So that's gonna be the, the plan, is to kind of lay out when those meetings start to occur. And then, uh, divide and conquer and figure out how we're gonna do it. Get the same type of input from them, uh, that we're asking for you guys from, and then eventually come back here. Um, after a couple of working sessions, uh, and some public hearings, um, knock this thing out as the first component of the comprehensive plan. That's everything I was prepared to say, what else did I leave off?
Um, I, so CDC actually has their March meeting next week. Um, so we are planning on putting it on their, putting the map on their agenda for them to start reviewing and providing input. Um, and then, so the month of March, we were planning on doing other subcommittees, um. March is sneaking up on us like Monday, so.
Yeah, the other, the other thing we moved up in the schedule from later was to meet with developers and real estate groups in case there were perturbations to the plan. We didn't want to catch that late in the process, we wanted to catch it early.
Good idea.
Yep.
Uh, so then April 8th, um, we would bring back another version of the map to the commission. Um, and it, the subcommittee will meet, you know, in between all these steps as needed. Uh, May 3rd is the goal for, to have a work session with City Council, um, to review all of our changes and get their input. And then June would be a goal to reach out to the public, maybe do a few town hall meetings. Um, and get some public input, um, social media, Facebook, um, and then reach out to some property owners. And then July, um, have another review of the map with the full commission. And then August, a final work session with City Council, and then September, October, November, uh, would be adopting the map with an ordinance. And this is just a piece of the comprehensive plan, but it's a big piece. So, um, in the meantime, we can hopefully still keep, you know, keep working on the written part of the comp plan that goes with this.
I- is this a similar process that we used or was used back in 2008? As far as the public meetings and the workshops, okay?
Yes.
I had just, I think, three quick questions that we, we haven't covered. One, just, it's just a curiosity, cause in looking at it, you know, a lot of things were grouped, a lot of zoning classifications were, were, uh, grouped together, retail. It wasn't broken out, something like that, but then, uh, single-family residential estates was, was broken out. Is there a rea- I, I'm just curious, is there a reason why it's broken out?
Yes.
When very few are?
Uh, yeah. So that was back in 2008, when we, um, had the big push for the, uh, single-family residential estate lots. This was, so we have the SFRE zoning is in our zoning ordinance right now. I think there was a big push for that after, we had a property. Um, over, I think it was on Falling Leaf, it was like a 12-acre piece of property. That was gonna subdivide and build a subdivision, basically, you know, right in the middle of all these big lots. They met our requirements, they did get a push, you know, a lot of pushback from the neighbors, obviously, and they ended up going down to like eight lots, and then four lots, and then. Two lots, and I think that's where it ended up, was just being subdivided into two lots. So that kind of stirred everybody up, um, like, oh, we have this single-family residential estate zoning. And so there was actually discussion with City Council as to whether or not City Council wanted to proactively rezone. Any property that was greater than two acres to SFRE. So that would keep properties from subdividing to anything less than two acres. So all the teal colors on the old map are the properties that we kind of narrowed down, that were about two acres or more. And so those are properties that could potentially be SFRE zoning. Council decided at the time that they did not want to do that. I think we have three individual lots that the owners actually applied and changed their own zoning to SFRE. Um, and those are reflected on the zoning map. Um, but like I said, council opted to not.
There's a history, okay, it just, it just stood out to me.
And we can, I mean, we could go back and just change all that to the low-density, we don't have to keep.
But it's also a good tool, it's a good tool instead, so if you want, uh, you know, 20 families living here, population rises really fast. If you want three families or, you know, two families living there, then that kind of keeps it, so it, it's, it's a useful tool.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to figure out right now how it's gonna go, what input we're gonna get, but. My gut feel is, if we don't need to make a change, don't, cause the, the less changes, you know, the better probably. But things that make sense, let's, let's fight for those and not, things like this that, that don't matter, leave it alone, it, it would be my inclination off the bat.
And I think Lake City and Pearland both have tiered low-density residential, um, development identified on their maps as well. So it's, uh, it's not uncommon to.
Have something like.
Differentiate those densities.
Well, speaking of density, then my other question was on high density, uh, cause that's always, um, a concern for citizens. Uh, we saw that on Friendswood Link Road and that sort of thing, we talked about that. Is there anything, I, I'm just, it's more back to curiosity, is there anything that's in the future land use map? Or that is designated as high density that's not already built upon?
No.
I could not find anything either, a- and I just. We didn't, yeah, that, I think, I wanted to double-check that.
Yeah, we talked about that, if I remember right, I think we'd asked that question.
Okay.
Which, and if there, you know, maybe that we make that one of our points to review the whole city, and maybe if there are any places where we identify that would be. You know, could potentially be okay for high-density residential, then we could, you know, definitely.
As a discussion.
Consider that.
Okay.
But you didn't, you didn't add any in this review, you did not add any, and what's there, what's shown as high density is already something there, high density.
Correct.
Okay, a- and you talked earlier on about the 80/20 split, uh, residential, commercial. Does this land use map that's being proposed at this stage, does it get us closer to the 80/20? Uh, keep it further away, about the same as it isn't at percentages as they are now?
Uh, those are the calculations that I need to run, um, and like I said, I'd like to do a little more cleanup on the map before we.
It's a, it's our, it's our best guess, I'm sorry Travis, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that was a huge, one of the three pillars that we were going into, and, and there's a bunch of variables along with it, so we need to get the consensus back. Then what people end up doing with the, with that future land use will also affect it, so it's kind of a moving target. But that is one of our main goals, and, and, and when we're thinking out 500 feet off or 300 feet off, is taking that into account as well.
Just, just was curious, so you're still working on that, got it, that, that was all I had. Thank you very much. No, it's, it, it's very complicated.
Yeah.
A lot of moving pieces on this, so good work.
Just one quick comment for me, if you could, uh, two, I really echo what Joe said, it, fight your battles, so don't change it if it doesn't improve things, I guess. You know, discretionary things, try to keep them to a minimum so that we can actually get success on the things we really care about. Uh, but the other thing is, when I look at the two maps, I think the new colors are hideous, I know you have to change them to them. But I, I, I find, I have a much more difficult time reading the new map than the old map. I don't know if there's a way to enhance the streets by making them dark or ringing them or something like that. I noticed the old map, I, it's just very clear, I know exactly what I'm looking at, and, and we've made it worse, and I hate that. So, uh, just a comment, I, I, it's more of a drafting issue.
Okay.
Anything else on this topic?
Yeah, I have, I'd like to better understand the estates. Uh, since, since I live on five acres with everybody around me on five acres, um, I'm not sure if I understood. Is there, so there are neighborhoods that are designated as estate?
No, no, we only have three individual lots that are designated as estates, and so that was the big discussion back when that was, was a hot topic. Um, unless you go in and change the whole neighborhood, it really. Like if an individual changing their own property, you're only limiting yourself. You're not limiting your neighbors, and you don't have any control over your neighbors, so, you know, if you change your zoning to, cause the minimum lot size for SFRE is two acres. And so if you change your zoning, then you're tying your hands, and your neighbors don't have the same requirement.
So my neighbors around me say they're on five-acre lots, they can subdivide them to quarter acre?
If they meet our minimum lot size requirements and street frontage and access and all that, they can subdivide.
Okey-dokey.
Any, anything else on this topic?
I'd, I'd just like to say, uh, the subcommittee did a good job so far, I mean, I like what you guys have put together. Look forward to seeing what the final product is. Good job.
Okay, our next discussion item is the proposed amendment to Appendix B, the subdivision. Okay, our next discussion item is the proposed amendment to Appendix B, the subdivision ordinance in its entirety to update in accordance to House Bill 3167, as well as to incorporate some additional administrative requirements. Becky?
Yes, sir. So we did a, pretty much an overhaul of the subdivision ordinance. Staff went through and made necessary changes brought on by the, the House bill from 2019 that changed some of our plating requirements, and then kind of got on a roll and decided to, to reorganize. Basically, we came to realize that we were missing a lot of pieces. Instead of going, you know, A, B, C, D, it kind of went A, C, D, and so we filled in the gaps. We did use League City's ordinance as kind of a, a guide to make sure that we got everything in the correct order and all the missing parts put in. So we, I don't know, it's, I'm guessing it was in y'all's backup.
Aubrey, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
Yes.
It's in the backup.
You have anything? If you have any specifics.
We did start a draft of a PowerPoint that will ultimately go to council whenever we get to that point, because this will be public hearings and, you know, readings by city council. See if we can get it up. It's pretty, the PowerPoint's pretty slim, just kind of hits the, the highlights. So on the next slide, we basically outlined our objective, which is to update the subdivision ordinance for, you know, these following reasons. Number one is to include the House bill changes. Then we reorganized for easier reference. We clarified our process from beginning, middle, and end. So we started with, you have a master plan, and then you end up with, you know, actually building your subdivisions. And then filled, filled gaps of information or instruction. So, you know, we were missing items such as, you know, the authority for us to even regulate subdivision-type stuff. It, it was implied, but it wasn't actually written in there. And we didn't have a section on variances for subdivisions, which is a thing, but it was not in our ordinance at all. So, and then we'd actually added some more information in there. That way, when developers are trying to create a subdivision, they, they don't have to go back and forth between our different appendixes, or appendices, sorry. So we added in sections for, like, the COD landscape buffer and tree mitigation requirements, since that is a hot topic. And then fire code requirements was, I don't, it was pretty lacking. So we copied a nice big chunk from League City for that one. The next slide is basically just a comparison of our current table of contents versus the proposed table of contents. It just kind of shows the flow and that everything goes in a much more organized manner. We do have, so we broke down a lot of our sections. Instead of having one giant chunk of like, our current, number three is general requirements and design criteria, and everything's just thrown in there. So our proposed actually breaks it down. Number six is street designs, seven is easements, eight is lot designs, and we kind of made it very simple to find information. The next slide talks about the House bill changes. So luckily for us, we already do this. So we're not, we haven't been in violation, but we do need to get it codified into our subdivision ordinance. Basically, somebody approached, you know, the government and said, cities are holding us up. We need, we need stricter timelines. We want to get, we want to get through the process. So y'all have seen our submittal schedules. They're currently on a 30-day. This bill makes it a 30-day. So, and y'all have seen the changes in your, your recommendation memos saying approval, disapproval, or approval with conditions. So this is basically putting all of that language into our subdivision ordinance. And this just kind of tells what the changes are and how we're currently handling it. So, you know, the planning department currently operates on a 30-day deadline, so we're good there. Another requirement is you have to give them very specific citations as to why you're disapproving or denying their plan. That's something we already do. We reference the code section and say, you know, this, this is lacking, or you need to fix this. So, and then the other change is, right now, for certain replats, you have to send out notices to everybody within 200 feet of, and in the original subdivision, saying, there's a replat coming up. This House bill actually changed it to where you send the notice after you approve the replat. Not entirely sure why, but that is the current state law, so we're going to change our ordinance to match that. Currently, we do have courtesy notices, and the subcommittee did talk about leaving the notices in there, but that would, it kind of gives the neighbors false hope that they can come and they can speak against it, and then we would deny the replat, but we're not even going to have that option. So it's, it seems unfair to them to, to make them think that they can come up here and make, make a difference, and, and they can't. Our hands are tied by the state. So.
Yeah, yeah, since we're here on that, that's a tough one for me. That was one of my comments, is can, can we do both? Can we tell them before and after? I mean, being, but, but I know we tackled this a lot last year on another similar topic, where about notification, and I think in the end, we said, it's not necessary to do it because there's no, nothing that can change. But that just seems harsh. I mean, information always seems like a good thing to provide to people.
And we did, the subcommittee did discuss it. We talked about, you know, well, let's do both, or let's, you know, keep our courtesy notices for the other ones. But in the end, if I was a homeowner and I got a letter and I came up here and, you know, I gave you all the reasons why you shouldn't do it, and then you said, well, it's not optional, then I, I don't know, I feel like some people would get their feelings kind of hurt. But it's, you know, it is up for discussion. That was just the subcommittee, so.
No, it's not an easy answer, and we debated this previously on the other topic.
Well, it wasn't, and, and we all had that same, same thought. It's just, it came back to the whole false hope, giving people the, the thought that they may be able to come in and argue something that, at the end of the day, is not arguable.
But at least allows then people to, to be able to go talk to their representatives and their senators and see about changing those pieces. But whether they do it before or after, that's still a long process, and it's not going to change probably their particular situation. Okay, I, you, since you mentioned it, this is one of the ones I really flagged to talk about. Keep going, sorry for derailing you.
No, no, and it was a hot topic with us, because we, we don't want residents to feel like we're taking away their voice, but if there's no recourse, then I'm, I'm kind of torn too, so.
And it's not a Friendswood requirement. It's a state law that we have to abide by.
Yes.
I still think you, they should have an opportunity to be heard. I mean, even if your notice says, you know, state law, blah, 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 that you, you, it cannot be changed, at least they have an opportunity to be heard. Just like Brady with the trees. He knew that it was within the ordinance, but he wanted an opportunity to be heard. So, if, if you were asking me my opinion, I would, I would say that we've been doing it right all along, even if there is no recourse.
And your point is to, you could even put it in the notification that this is per state law, that it can't, you know, as long as they meet the requirements, we're required to approve this.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they do still have an opportunity to voice, and.
So the law requires us to send them a notice afterwards, and you'd say, we should give them notice before and after? And that's perfectly understandable.
The courtesy notices, we ended up putting in the ordinance after that Falling Leaf project in like 2008, 2009. And we actually draft, it's a different notice that we send out. It's not our typical legal notice. It says, this is a courtesy notice, you know, that this, you know, your neighbor's subdividing their property. The only other thing I could think of is, we don't enforce deed restrictions, and a lot of the HOAs are not active anymore. But in some cases, if, you know, the HOA is not aware of what's going on, it might notify the HOA. Or, I don't know, some neighbors cave under neighborly pressure, so.
Yeah, I mean, I always try to think of this as, what would it be if something happened at my house or near me? Well, I, even if I knew I couldn't do something, I'd still, I'd still, for me, would want to know.
I would too.
I could see where you struggled on it, because I know we struggled on it last year. Okay, I got you off track.
Nope, I'm, I'm making notes. Yeah, like I said, that, that probably was the toughest one that we came up against. We didn't have any issues with, or I say we, I don't believe, the subcommittee had any issues with the reorganization or breaking out the sections. The redline version of the ordinance rewrite, it's still pretty rough. Still needs to be formatted, all that, all that good fun stuff, make everything match. I did send it out to the other departments. Fire marshal reviewed it, and they liked the changes. They had one typo comment, and then Public Works and Engineering are still reviewing. So once we get comments back from them, just to make sure that they don't want to add anything, change anything, take anything out, then we'll get, we'll clean it up and bring it, you know, go through the whole process. Still need to get with Mary Kay as well, and make sure we get all of our, our legal stuff in order. Don't miss any of that. But the, the courtesy notices was basically the only topic really to discuss as far as the rewrite went. Guys, anything else?
I'd say that Becky did a pretty good, or really good job with cleaning up a lot of the writing. She also, there's a lot of duplicate information where she instead went to references, which at, at the end of the day, will, will eliminate the potential for one, one part of the document to get updated and forgetting to update the next part with the same information. So that was a good decision on her, her part. She, she made quite a bit of changes. If you read through it, she's done a pretty good job, I'm sure. We may find some other things, but I, I think she did a pretty good, good job myself.
Now, I, I echo what you said, Tom. Becky did an amazing job on this thing. It's a very long ordinance. It's mind-numbingly boring for those who aren't really into this funding subject. But it's, it's a much better, much more cohesive document now, and I think it'll be even better when we, when we finish. We'll take on board your comments at our next meeting and, and kind of kick that around. I can, I can see your arguments, I can see arguments both ways, and like you say, we were conflicted on it. So we'll come back with, with something on that.
Can, can you clarify the Section 15 on the variances? Was that, was that state language that you were required to put in, or did you steal that from another city?
That was stolen from League City, but there are, when it comes to plating requirements, the plating requirements reference subdivision variances, and we didn't have any of that in our ordinance. So it definitely is, is a missing chunk that needs to be put in there.
Yeah, just, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of legal language in there that makes me nervous. Means, means it's going to be hard to make a decision if I'm sitting here for some of these variances, because you talk about planning and zoning, and I'm, I'm assuming that the authority in Section 15 is consistent with our charter or whatever, powers are delegated from the council. The other thing I wanted to ask, it talks about a three-quarter vote for variances.
Yep, saw that.
So from policy, would we know before we vote that we're doing a three-quarter vote? I mean, never do I know how anyone else is voting, but.
I mean, that's six out of seven.
That's, I mean, that's, as opposed to a majority or anything like that, I, I'd like to know if I'm.
That's consistent with ZBOA though, because ZBOA requires four out of five.
Yeah, I guess I'm just.
To approve a variance.
I guess I'm just scared, without thinking about this, reading this for the first time. I, I don't know if it matters to me right now, but if I'm making that type of vote versus just a simple majority vote, I'm not sure if it would change my vote, but.
No, we, I mean, we would, staff would definitely tell you, you know, this voting process is different than what y'all are used to. You know, these are the rules, this is what's required, just because very, very rarely does it come up. The most common subdivision variance, which we pretty much don't ever do, are flag lots.
Okay.
Where you just have a little tiny piece at the street that, you know, you get, basically their driveway goes up, and then it breaks out into their, their big lot where their house is. That's probably.
Okay, so these are, these are big things that fall underneath Section 15?
No, I mean, a variance for the subdivision ordinance is going to be lot design. Flag lots is really the main one that hits cities.
Yeah. It's just, you know, the tree, the tree thing is fresh in my mind, and, I mean, I, I know we, our policies and procedures didn't allow us, for us to get city council involved, but if, if there's a potential under Section 15 to have some of these controversial-type things, it'd be nice sometimes, not that I want to shirk our responsibilities, to get city council involved without having, being forced to make a decision and having, under a tight timeline.
Well, because the commission is the approving body for plaits, then y'all would be the approving body for variance for the same requirements.
Has to, or that's the choice we're making by supporting this, the way it's written?
So state law, I believe, allows, I mean, we could get.
Oh, she's got to get the big book out.
Look, you got her, her big book out.
That's next.
I mean, plaits and subdivision stuff could also go to council, but.
No, I think the way it's written is, council has appointed this body to serve that role.
Yes, they, they delegate it to y'all.
Yeah, I just, I just, question is, that has to be absolute all the time. Are there opportunities for us to have more dialogue and get a better indication, maybe the way city wants to go?
Let me, I'd like to at least put my two cents in two, in two aspects of this. One is, anything that's significant is never done in a vacuum. There's always conversations, I know, that go on.
Whether it's here or not.
And, and yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So very, anything of, of note, material, is not going to get done in a vacuum, at least based on my experience so far. But two, the second point is, is that I think we are the right body, only because we have the time. We've been appointed to do this, and we have more of a time to really dig into those kind of details. Where city council, I think, in a lot of ways, is handling so many other issues that they don't have the time to really drill down into the nuances, as, as, you know, look at this, with this rewrite.
Right.
Is, I don't know, I gave 20, 30 pages of, of changes. So I, again, I, I understand your point completely, but I, I just know from my experience, it's not done in a vacuum.
Yeah, I'm, I'm content. I just wanted to bring it up in case it was something that we threw in there and overlooked. But as always, you guys are a step ahead of all of us, so, thanks.
And I, last slide was basically just questions that, that's done with. But, I mean, we can definitely look into and discuss more of the subcommittee courtesy notices. We can dig into, since we've never done subdivision variances, basically, we can dig in and get some examples of what you would be looking at. And if or when it comes up, I mean, we'll definitely, staff will give plenty of heads up, plenty of training. You know, this is what to expect, this is what's expected of you. And like I said, it's, it's not common at all to come across, but.
Yeah, that makes me feel better. There's just a lot, a lot of words in here.
It is, and like I said, Mary Kay hasn't even had a chance to, to dig into any of this. We're just trying to get all of our pieces moved around for the most part, and then we'll make sure we get all the, the fine details sewed up.
Yeah.
But no, I think you did a great job finding some missing pieces that, those are the kind of things that, you know, without addressing them, they come up and bite you, and you end up with unintended consequences, because we, we were lacking some language.
I think Aubrey's been keeping a list for many, many years. So it was definitely, definitely group effort to try and get all these things rearranged and put in there, and.
I had, and this is, I'm talking, I'll keep going. I didn't mean to jump ahead of everybody. But I had two, two other points. One is, that caught my attention was amending plaits, where the city manager or the designee of the city manager has the, the right. Early on, I kind of started and said, really? They can amend plaits on their own? We, you know, it comes to us, we say yes, we approve it, and then it goes to the city manager, then they can make changes. But then you keep reading, then later on, it says, well, yes, but only in these certain areas. It's a minor thing, but in your subcommittee, discuss whether, in the kind of the preamble where it states, the city manager or the designee can make these changes. Maybe qualify that and just say, per Section, what is it, 6C? Go ahead and highlight that early on, rather than saying, yes, the. Go ahead and highlight that early on, rather than saying, yes, they can do this, but then later take it away a little bit. Just put it up front so it ties back to that, because I got, I felt much better about, oh, it, oh, for a little minute, you know, ministerial kind of changes, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, we can do that, that language is taken directly from state law. That amending plat section is literally copied out of local government code, but we can add a reference at the beginning, just to, yeah, just to make it more comfortable.
You get there, I mean, you get there if you read the whole thing. I just would be concerned somebody like I did, read the first part and go, aha! You know, then, but no, then they take it away and modify it later. So, uh, this is just a comment, but if it's per state law, then it is what it is, and it gets, it gets the job done.
Yeah, and that, it is written like that now, and that is how we do amending plaits. Basically, if somebody comes in and they say, oops, you know, this number's wrong, or I need to move this lot line over a little bit, then that is basically a staff review and city manager can sign off on it, and then we can record the plat.
Okay, that.
But yes, def- definitely.
Once I saw the, the scope of the, what was amendable, uh, anyway, so, perfect. So the, then on the second one was master plans. Is that new? Do we, okay, perfect, because I was like, have we, I haven't ever seen a master plan. And I think we've had several, uh, developments in Friendswood that would have fell under that way. We would have probably had master plans and been able to see, I was just curious, okay.
Y- yes, that is new, it's referenced with the House bill changes, um, in regards to plating. And right now, we have a conceptual plan, um, that can come to the commission. But in our ordinance, it specifically says you cannot approve a conceptual plan, so basically it's just kind of like, hey! It's not binding in any way whatsoever, it's, so basically, we took out conceptual plan and we put in master plan just to give more guidance to developers, tie it to the plating, um, but that is a totally new section, yes.
Okay, i- it makes sense, and there's some, some developments, although we're running out of the space for big, for very few left, big developments, but, uh, it would be nice to see it all kind of out, what's the, what's the developer's thinking? So you know how all the pieces fit together in their, in their thought process. So I think it's a good idea. Uh, the, the only other comment I had on that, on master plans was, what I didn't see is a sunset provision. They talked about, uh, other, other things that have time limits of when you've got to start work and that sort of thing. But I was just curious, just to throw out, and again, if it's state law, it is, and it's just done. But, you know, we, could somebody actually start a development under a master plan and then walk away from it? And if they didn't do work, I mean, I'll make up a date, uh, if they had not done any work in five years, well, does that master plan, I mean, does that always hang out there, because times change? And I, I know we think about that, we've thought about that, about, uh, PUDs and other things, about sunsetting. I, I'm not sure if it works in this case or not, I wouldn't want to hamstring a developer, it's their property. If they want to put roads in and stop, that's their business. But, I don't know, I, it's just, it just, no, I caught it because I know we've talked about sunset kind of provisions and other places, that at some really long period of time, it just makes no sense to have those approvals still out there for those things. I wonder, for discussion, that's all.
Yeah, we can throw that one around, um, I, I would think if somebody, say, started, they built one out of four sections and then walk away, somebody else could come in and either take over the master plan, or they could submit their own master plan, and it would then be ruling over, I don't know, we can talk about it.
Well, I just, a- and I agree, a hundred percent agree with what you said, I just thought, it just, it, it never went away. The approval never went away, even if they stopped work for ten years.
Right, no, no, I agree, it's, it is unfortunate to have those things hanging out long term.
But think about it, may, it's not a have-to-do, it's just a think about. Remember Joe said this, and let's, let's ignore that.
Maybe the two-year timeframe like we have for S U Ps.
Yeah, we.
Sunset on the master plan is probably something.
Yes, we have two years on S U Ps, we're discussing putting two years on PUDs, and so, I mean, I can just.
Okay. That, that was all I had.
Go with the flow on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can agree with Joe, so i- if they, if they just drop it, then we have the, uh, opportunity to, if, if, as a city, we want to change the way we agreed to let that, uh, be developed, then we have that right, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and we could say, I mean, it, it, you know, they expire if they haven't been started, which is what we do with S U Ps. But, I mean, once you pull a permit and start, you know, doing work, then you're vested in your master plan, basically. But if you, you know, if you get your plan approved and don't start, don't even move dirt for two years, and then, then three years later, you want to come back, you just have to resubmit it again.
Right. Okay.
Good catch, um, any, anything else on subdivisions? All right.
Okay, then our last discussion item tonight is the proposed amendments to appendix C zoning ordinance, section eight. What, I, two, F, preserving trees, historical significance? Becky?
Okay, so the hot topic lately is tree mitigation and tree preservation. So the subcommittee met, and I pulled ordinances from League City and Pearland, so both of our neighbors, just to look at, what do we require, what do they require, um, you know, kind of where do we fall in line with that? So, as of right now, the city of Friendswood, any tree twelve inches or greater, if it is removed or not protected during construction on non-residential properties, so commercial properties and then common areas for residential, so rec centers, things like that for subdivisions, um, those are the trees you have to identify. Um, our current code, if you remove one of those trees, you have to replace it with a three-inch caliper tree. Um, so looking at our neighboring cities, Pearland requires. Let's see what we got.
Can we put that up on the screen?
Do you want me to pull it up? Yeah.
Did we?
Yeah, the very last page. So while we're doing that, the, the, the other plans are much more onerous, uh, dramatically so.
They, they are, and.
And, and so if, if you, for instance, took out a thirty-inch tree on, on a commercial lot, that would, it, we would require one three-inch tree, while, um, Pearland would require ninety inches of caliper, in, no long, no smaller than sixty, six-inch trees. So it would be like fifteen six-inch trees compared to our one three-inch tree. And so, I'm speaking for the whole committee, but just, I, I think we kind of talked about it and said, that sounds pretty onerous, and ours sounds pretty wimpy, and so we're probably working towards something in the middle.
Can you guys touch, as you're introducing this, can you touch on things that were, where you drew scope on what you were considering? Like, for example, I'm assuming you did not consider or dismissed not being able to remove certain trees. Was that part of the discussion?
That, that, that wasn't part of the discussion.
I assumed it was out of scope.
Well, we, we didn't address that. Yeah, we didn't forbid removing trees, we, we, we left discretion, but we tried, tried to raise the penalty, uh, or the, the in- incentive for people to keep trees.
Okay.
And right now, Pearland and League City have much higher incentives, especially for large trees.
Okay.
Um. Well, Mark, s- sorry, Richard, but, uh, some of this is set, set to discourage the removal of some of the trees you're probably mentioning, just because it's, uh, there's greater penalty the bigger the tree is.
Yeah.
Um, but we've also talked about, uh, about types of trees, so oak, oak trees are preferred trees, whereas we have, you know, uh, crepe myrtles are a non-preferred tree, that type of.
Sure.
So we, we've talked about, uh, types of trees and, and species and, and that type also, so.
Okay, thank you.
So no decisions have been made, but what we, what, what at least I think I, I'm pushing toward is maybe stealing one of their ordinances almost in full and replacing ours and then tweaking it. Um, so that we capture, capture what Tom was saying about the, the more preferred trees. And they have a couple of other things in these that, that looked pretty good, um, to me, anyway. When we have trees that are not going to go on the property, we, we have to bid it out each time, and we get three bids and try to determine how much it costs per tree.
The tree fund.
Yeah, and, and then collect that cash for the tree fund. What Pearland and League City both do is they've just automatically, they've decided in advance, it's two hundred dollars per caliper inch, or two fifty is one, two hundred for Pearland, two fifty in League City. I kind of like the clarity of that and the lack of potential chicanery of trying to rig bids or, and just, just, it makes it clean. And, and I don't know that you need to be rebidding the cost of a tree every time somebody needs to move a tree. One, one thing that I thought was interesting, League City, um, will give you a credit, a partial credit uh, against this payment into the tree fund associated with moving non-invasive trees. Um, you know, so getting rid of, I don't know, Chinese tallow trees or a whole, they have a whole list already included. I kind of liked that as a, as a offset to some of these penalties. And so we really haven't got anything to show you today, but just kind of tell you our thinking, uh, where we're at, and, and how, how Friendswood compares to the neighboring cities. And, uh, I don't know if you guys heard, but when we were talking on the most recent property, the Friendship Center, uh, I heard some, three different times, Sal say, well, we looked at it, we saw there was no penalty for removing them, and we said, we'll get rid of them. If this had been in League City, we'd have done something different. Well, I would like to kind of, at least encourage them to, to think twice before, before they start removing trees, especially really historic, you know, nice trees. And again, this doesn't affect residential properties, like Becky had said, this is just commercial, and, and.
Yeah, and obviously Pearland and League City are going through lots of development, it's not stopping people from de- developing land.
That, that's a very good point, I think, and, and you guys probably know better than I, that this was put in to be developer-friendly when we were doing a very lousy job of, of attracting development. And so we were looking for everything we could to get more development. Obviously, these didn't stop League City and Pearland from getting there, it was something else that kept Friendswood from getting development. And so, uh, like I said, I, and, and Dick and Tom kind of speak up, but, but my, my impression is we'll do something closer to them, but maybe not quite as onerous.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree with what, uh, Richard said, and, um, the, uh, the, uh, non-preferred trees, just to clarify on that, there's a credit for those, but it's not nearly equal to the, the, uh, the penalty, so it's not like it's a one-for-one. Um, but, um, you know, I, I agree with Richard too, that, that I don't, I don't necessarily think that the trees are what deterred business, although we don't want to get to a point where we, um, we do make a deterrent, deterrent, right? And, um, there's, um, if, if the trees can't be replaced on site, they go into the fund, which the fund can be used for, uh, quite a few, uh, other, other things around the city. So that's, uh, a, another good opportunity, so, um. Really, I, I'm just looking forward to get, getting this put together and, uh, getting one marked down on the books, so.
One other, go ahead, Dick, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the Friendswood ordinance does, does not have any teeth in it, you know, and, uh, we, we just absolutely need to fix it as soon as possible. The, the exact words that we're, we're going to see are maybe not anything you're looking at here, maybe they are, but it's going to be a whole lot better than what we have, so.
And, and just to go before we finish off, the, the tree fund that we have is to be used for putting trees on parks. Uh, and, and it's, it's somewhat limited, uh, the other two cities kind of leave discretion. They can use that money actually for trimming existing trees, and, and they leave themselves some latitude to use it for various things. In, in theory, we could even put it on selected commercial properties if we decided we wanted to do something like that, or some places where it just would improve the whole city. Um, and so we, we're, we're looking at that as well, just not tying our hands so much on this tree fund to where the parks don't need more trees, is what I'm hearing. And so we have this fund, and we have nothing to use it for that enhances the community.
So you could use it for something like a property who decided to keep a thirty-eight-inch tree, and we can offset the cost of keeping that thing alive?
In theory, yeah.
That sounds great.
And that's what the other cities are doing, sorry?
They, they, they don't seem to limit themselves, so I, I, it, it, it doesn't say what they can't do or can do, it just says we'll be using it for trees. One of them, I think, did say, you know, in terms of maintenance on trees as well, or planting trees. And so, uh, I, I, from what I understand, and Mary Kay, you can probably correct me, the sidewalk fund is pretty limited, and, and probably for state reasons it is. But this one is more discretionary, potentially discretionary, state doesn't get in our business in terms of what you can use a tree fund for. So, so the world is our oyster, and we have kind of tied ourselves up. And, and my, my, my suggestion is we untie ourselves and allow ourselves to use this for, in, in some way, make sure it's for the betterment of the city, but, but, uh, you know, not tie it up to where you can only use it for something, and now we don't even need that, we've got so many trees on the parks that we don't need it, and this money's sitting there not being used.
So is, is the, the thought process to kind of, now that you presented it to the full commission, then go back and kind of flesh it out further with a recommendation to this body, and then from here to city council?
Yeah, we had our first meeting and kind of, and, and Becky did a great job of bringing in the other two ordinances, and we, it was eye-opening, to be honest. And so, um, we thought we'd just, you know, maybe jump the gun, get, let you guys know what we're thinking. Any feedback, we're, we're happy to hear, uh, but, uh, just don't want to spring it on you when we've got it fully baked a- as we're working it, and, uh, it's, it's now's the time for input, so, you know, so you can move the rock or, or, you know, modify our thinking. It's, because nothing's set in stone, or even starting to harden for that matter.
Yeah.
I think, big picture, this is exactly what, how, I mean, awesome job, because we, we were frustrated with the ordinance in, in the past. We changed the ordinance to better suit what we desires, that's awesome, great job.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good step too, I'm glad to see it. Um, and, and I don't want to overreact, so, so looking at this, in our most recent example, someone would have had to replace under either Pearland or League City case, twenty or twenty-six, either eight-inch or two-inch trees. Is it feasible for us to, you, you mentioned the parks. Are you guys going to look on how feasible it is to put that many trees back into Friendswood? I mean, if we have an ordinance that is not going to stand the test of time because we don't have the footprint available to put that many trees?
So Mark, that's the, that's the purpose of the fund, so if, if there's, uh, it's not necessarily that, that, uh, the tree has to be planted in the park. Either they plant the tree on their property, or they pay into the fund, and then the city decides what to do with that fund.
Yeah. Okay, so it doesn't necessarily, what, okay, so it doesn't have to result in twenty-eight-inch trees?
We're talking about, you know, in, in the low tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
Right. So if you had a hundred inches of tree to mitigate, it would be twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars that could then be used for whatever we specify.
Thank you for dumbing that down for me. Um, yeah, because really, my last question was, you know, we, we debated, or there was debate, and certainly there can, continue to be debate on whether or not trees of that size or caliper, provide value to the property or not, and then there's the marketability, if, if we put onerous ordinances on someone. So the property value might remain high, but then no one wants to touch it. Um, so I'm sure you guys are thinking about that, but certainly, and, and man, I keep getting, I keep getting cross myself on this, because on one side, I'm on the developer, and the next time, I'm on the, on the public side. So, um, you guys have a tough one here, but you guys are making good work of it.
We're, we're right with you, I mean, the example I, I use is, is the one that's right in front of us, the, the Friendship Center, the Parsonage. The, the comment I, I heard from some developers is that property would be worth less if you put this in. So you're taking money out of their pocket.
Right.
And, and so I'm a private landowner, why should I lose money? It's, it's like people who happen to have the unfortunate, I, uh, situation where they have a house where Stonewall Jackson stayed one night.
Right.
And so, now, now you're not allowed to change the thing, and you can't put in air conditioning because it would ruin the character of the building, and people are stepping into, this is a little bit of that.
Yes.
But I think where we are and where we need to be is, is just, we need to move more that direction.
I think we all can agree on that, but it's, yeah, I just not surprised you guys are considering that again, so I just wanted to make sure my.
I'm with you.
Point is made.
And I liked how you guys said, you, you looked at what they did, where we are, and there's a happy medium somewhere, so we get to decide, and, and that's the best, best solution.
So one, one thing that I would like to see, I noticed that, like in the League City, and I know you said you were leaning more toward the League City, like for a forty-inch tree, you still come back with two-inch trees. I, I would like to see a happy medium in between those, where you can't take out a forty-inch tree and put two-inch trees back. So I, I do like that the Pearland says you need to come back with eight-inch trees, but the four hundred percent, I mean, I mean, that's, that's really spanking them, right? But, um, so.
Yep.
Kind of a combination of the two is, is where I'd like, okay.
No, I'm right with you, I kind of like that aspect of it as well. You know, although an eight-inch tree, I'm told, costs more than four times as four, as four two-inch trees. And so, what's that? Yeah, right, but.
That's fine.
Yeah, you, at, at the end of the day, this, uh, I think this will help support saving the trees that we want to save, but it'll also be fair to developers, they know what the, they know what they're getting into going into it.
Yeah.
So instead of going to develop the, uh, the property like the friend, uh, the, the one we're talking about, you know, he's going to know upfront that, uh, hey, this is, this is what it's going to cost me, there is no argument, right? There is no argument, right?
Yeah.
So I, I think it would have eliminated a lot of arguments in this property.
So, so I would like to say something. I, I know that, that being fair to developers to get development is right, but I also feel like it is the city's responsibility to look at more than just what a developer do, does on one piece of land. Cause you have to look at, if you take out 98% of the prairie, you get flooding. But everybody is looking at their one piece of land, right? And so they knock out the whole prairie and put in their parking lots. So yes, we do need to be on the side of the developer, but it is the city's responsibility to also have and keep that big picture so that you don't wipe out everything for, and for the, to the devastation of the whole community.
And our ordinances actually say that. I mean, say with just what you said, it's how I interpret them. That says, yes, there are property rights, but you have to consider the property rights of all the surrounding people. You have to fit the development into what, what the rest of the property looks like. Exactly what you're saying.
Right. Okay. I thought we were going somewhere else, but I wanted to put that in there.
That's the reason I asked the question on what was the scope of what they were attempting to address. Keeping our large valuable trees in the downtown area, that's, that's a, and to me, that's an entirely separate discussion than writing an ordinance on how to replace and mitigate tree loss. There's, in my mind, they're two different things. If the city wants to keep those trees, city needs to make that demands. And if it's part of our job to help protect those through ordinance, then, then we do that.
I mean, I think it's the right time to definitely to look at the ordinance, especially it looks like we're, we're kind of out of sort, we're, we're kind of off on our own a little bit to at least some of the surrounding communities. So it bears looking at. I guess I had one other, I, sorry, just one other comment because I know Aubrey has taught me and Becky has taught me several times in, about the, when we say those lowly horrible crepe myrtles, those aren't really trees. I don't know who says that, but somebody does.
I don't know.
And, and, you know, keep in mind that there are time and places, you know, over sewer systems, we have to be careful of sidewalks. There are the right places for things like that. So, and I know y'all know because you've been in some of those conversations as well. So I just had to at least put it out there that I am listening to Aubrey and Becky explain to me, there are, there's more complicated than just, we like oak trees.
Right, right. There's tower line issues, there's sidewalk issues, there are other issues. Yes, absolutely.
Did I do that right, Aubrey?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, and the, the League City and the Pearland ordinances and the other ones that I've looked at, they all have a section specifically for, which we have it in ours. It's very basic. It says, you know, you can only plant size such and such within so many feet and this, you know, it just, it's basically ours is a little caveat that says, just don't tear up the utilities. League City and Pearland have actual like sections in their ordinance that very specifically calls out, you have to be this-sized tree, this-height tree within, you know, three feet of a sidewalk, five feet of a fire hydrant, seven feet of a major thoroughfare. Like, I mean, it calls out distances and so we may need to get something a little more detailed in there like that. They also have smaller, more defined tree lists, like what you can or cannot plant. I think it's a little clearer than the way that ours reads. So we, we can, we can get picky and choosy on, I think we need to look more at the, the quality of what we want them to put in, not the quantity of tree for tree. Right now, we have tree for tree and it is very, very hard on a, a heavily wooded lot for them to mitigate tree for tree. So I'd rather have less trees, larger trees, better quality trees than just, well, you need to put in 50 crepe myrtles. So that's kind of the, I think the direction that the subcommittee's going is what is gonna be best for the community as a whole come the very end and not making it too onerous on the developer. So not, not writing our code for the developer, but just making sure that it's gonna work both ways. Cause we do hear people that work in surrounding cities, staff does hear from them a lot about how horribly, horribly difficult and expensive it is to work in our neighboring cities and they like to work with us. So we wanna keep that feel.
Well, and that's what I was gonna say about the handcuffs of exactly this many feet, all, too much pressure from us is not necessarily always the best thing.
No, we just need to make sure that we protect our public utilities and streets and sidewalks and that is the pitfall of very, very large, beautiful trees is you have to make sure that they're in a good spot.
And I think we can learn a little bit from Pearland and League City because they both have arborist on staff.
They do have full-time arborist as well, so.
Anything else on this topic?
No, we'll, we'll definitely get a lot more detailed items to bring back. We just wanted to throw out what we're looking at, the direction we're going, get some input. You know, anybody have any great ideas you wanna put out in the very beginning that we need to incorporate?
No, thank you. Good, it's a great start. It's a good, it's a, it's a good topic. I'm glad we're addressing it. Anything else from anybody else on that? Okay, next is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, March 11th and the second meeting for the month of March is March 25th.
Okay, next are communications, starting with commissioner updates on anything that the commissioners wish to communicate, including suggestions for future, future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments. Mark, I'll start with you.
I think you've got current status for me.
Lisa?
Write it down this time. All right. So to their credit, the Keep Friendswood Beautiful is awesome about looking for grant opportunities and, and they must have some amazing grant writers. So there's a couple of grants that they're, that they have in that they're looking to, to see whether or not they're awarded. Adopt a Highway Cleanup is this Saturday, so that's coming up. A little update on the Ferry Trail. It has actually gotten quite a bit of notice. It's in a lot of different magazines and it's actually on TripAdvisor. So it's there, it has the most hits on any of their social media and I think it's become a big deal. They have some community education opportunities coming up that are just charming as heck. They have ferry home building, snake identification class. They, so I have noticed a heck of a lot of like posts about what is this snake? So maybe that's really, really needed. So I thought that was neat. There's a native prairie and pollinator class and then children's gardening. So I, I think they're a great community and, and I think they really listen to the community needs. So it's a great, KFB, I'm a huge fan. And then the Pollinator Garden, they're, they're planting it with wildflowers for spring. You know, that'll probably be coming up into March kinda thing. Another grant going in for the Pollinator Garden. And then as far as Parks and Rec, I guess they're opening up a, a new arbor. I haven't seen it, but I, I, it sounded like it was finishing. And then Disc Golf, we call it Frisbee Golf, but I guess you can't say that since Frisbee's trademarked or something, but they have to call it Disc Golf. So that's coming, opening up in the Parks Department.
Where's that gonna be, do you know?
Stevenson. Back, the two buyout lots that we bought out at the end of Shadwell, there were, used to be two homes back there. Those homes have been demolished and so the Disc Golf course is gonna be back there.
Lot of things coming up.
Yeah, thank you. Rich?
Yeah, we had, there was one Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District meeting on the 23rd, couple of days ago. Robert Grifon and I both attend. We get to look at each other. I could, actually I get to look at him a lot more because he shows his picture on the, on the Zoom meetings. They had an audit report. They do that every year and that was, they showed him in good financial shape. It was all approved. The Avalon Section 1 drainage plan got a lot of discussion. It was ultimately tabled. I think there's, there were some issues. They have been talking about raising the cost of regional detention and I think they've settled on, they, they were gonna be around $44,000 on acre foot, up from, I think it was 35 or 32, something like that. And then they decided 43,560 is number acres in a foot or a number of square feet in an acre. And so they said, we'll just change it to a dollar a square foot and make it a nice, easy number to remember. So that's the cost of regional detention has been raised to that. And then they, they had to shut down the Imperial Estates after the freeze. They're just getting restarted, ripping and going, taking out more and more trucks.
Thank you. Travis?
This is great, just happy to be here.
Tom?
No updates. Pass.
Let's see, I had just really quick things. One is, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we're finalizing our, our document that we started in December on setting our priorities for 2021. Many of the things we even talked about tonight are on that list. And so we're going to say that that's done for now and we'll be issuing that as a final document for all of our use as we move forward in 2021. So the other thing I was gonna mention is Monday, March 1st is the city coun, next city council meeting and I will be doing a presentation on P&amp;Z's 2020 activities. If you wanna bring popcorn and have a good show, come on out. So, but that, the 2020 activities and 2021 key priorities, just some of the things we'll be touching on. It's not a very long presentation, but it'll probably be, you know, seven or eight slides if I remember correctly. So that's on Monday. And then the, the last thing is, it's actually a request. Aubrey, I know that there's, I hear there's been some discussions going on about the, the Parsonage 501 South Friendswood Drive. And I know that there's just some ongoing discussions even after our last meeting. Could you, in your, at your communication period, could you just kinda give a really brief, high, high, high level of just what those discussions are? Okay, if you could do that, I would appreciate that. The, that's all I had. So council update, council member Grifon, thank you for coming.
Real quick, when is your, what time on Monday is your?
That's a, that is a really great question. I was just planning to be here. The city council starts at six and usually I'm fairly early in that, in their agenda, but it could be 6:15, 6:30. I don't, I did not look.
And Melinda wanted to maybe keep this a little bit on the down-low, but we're gonna be there at five to wish her off on her new adventures in retirement. So we'll be there at five and I think we do start at six. Commissioners, thank you for having me. I really appreciate being here. It's an honor and privilege to come up here and watch you all work. Y'all, y'all do a lot and y'all go over a lot of, lot of detailed things and I really do appreciate it. This evening I wanted to recap and possibly go over some of the many events that took place in this last winter storm. Some of the things you may know about, some of them that you may not know about, but also highlight some of the heroic efforts on the part of many of our dedicated working women and men that just completely went above and beyond the, the call of duty. We're just so lucky here in Friendswood to have them. On February the 14th, Honorable Mayor Mike Foreman by proclamation issued a declaration of local disaster for the city of Friendswood. The emergency management plan was activated and the emergency operations center was opened and manned 24/7 for the duration of the disaster. Over the ensuing four or five days, thousands of homes in Friendswood lost power. Roads throughout the region were in poor condition due to rain, freezing rain, ice pellets, sleet and snow. Texas DOT made sand passes on the farm-to-market roads while Friendswood Public Works worked on the bridges throughout the rest of the city. Initially, numerous subdivisions throughout the city experienced very low water pressure. Public Works and staff secured operations with our backup generators for the critical facilities and were able to restore pressure. Water and sewer services in the city of Friendswood were maintained throughout this event. On February the 15th, Texas New Mexico Power and CenterPoint had issued a statement that those currently without power would likely remain so. And they could not give us guidance when power could, could possibly be restored. Both companies blamed the Electric Reliability Council of Texas, ERCOT. Therefore, the city equipped and staffed two warming facilities at the library and the high school. These warming facilities were lightly used. I would like to thank Thad Roar and the Friendswood Independent School District for their help and especially our Parks and Rec team as they were the ones who staffed these warming facilities. And I don't know if y'all knew that. On February the 16th, our senior facilities experienced all kinds of problems and the city and our Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department responded remarkably. I was gonna go into more detail in regards to each one of these facilities, but I'm not gonna do that this evening. There's been a lot of conversations going on in regards to this. Suffice it to say that the state of Texas licensed and regulates senior facilities and these senior facilities in Friendswood house our most vulnerable population. I know past P&amp;Zs and past city councils have tried to enact stricter and culcate stricter regulations on these facilities, but I'm not gonna go into those problems that we had for each one of them. I just think I'm gonna let that pass tonight. It's getting kinda late anyway. But I think some legislation probably is gonna have to be brought in and I know that Larry Taylor's been talked to and I know that Greg Bonin's been talked to too. Our critical infrastructure. Surface Water 2 was in operation on a generator. A second backup was on site to ensure water services. Surface Water 1 was operational via public works backup generator. The water supply by the 16th was maintained at normal pressure. Public Works crews were busy with residential water shut-offs as broken pipes were reported. List Station 2 was operational on backup generator. A 320,000 watt secondary backup generator was ordered and I believe was shipped. Steer, S-T-E-A-R. That's me? Okay, well, steer. This is our disability evacuation list. Our city staff attempted to call the entire steer list, all 160 persons. All numbers called at least once and listed emergency contacts were called for those that they could not reach. Now, our own city personal staff conducted welfare checks on those that they were unable to get in touch with. So that's pretty remarkable. Our staff was reaching out to those that are on our disabilities list. Debris operations. The city estimated early on hundreds of homes had broken water pipes in the attics. Several churches had reported water line breaks causing damages and all kinds of damages. So the city staff immediately notified the city standby debris contractors for debris operations, anticipating damaged sheet rock, flooring, furniture and other household materials over the next few weeks. So that's already been contacted. On February the 17th, staff was informed by the city of Houston, they were reducing pressure at the Southeast Water Purification Plant for water coming into Friendswood. This drop in pressure was due to widespread water line breaks, both public systems and private residences. Public Works crews were able to get our groundwater well at Water Plant Number 4 online in Sunmeadow. This helped us supplement pressure from the south end. This was done to keep pressures reading in excess of 20 PSI and maintain proper chlorine residuals. That same day, however, it was made official, Houston issued a boil water notice for consumption. Up until this point and even after this point, we had been able to maintain our pressures and chlorine residuals. Unfortunately, Houston was concerned with the integrity of their system due to the widespread water line breaks. Since the city of Friendswood gets a vast majority of its water from Houston, Friendswood gave the boil water notice on all social media platforms via email, text and phone calls. On February the 18th, 99% of all electricity in the city of Friendswood had been restored. Emergency services had responded to high volumes every day. Emergency medical services had responded to high numbers of falls and oxygen issues. Friendswood Police Department had responded to unusual high numbers of fire alarms and sprinkler system issues. Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department, in addition to what I had already mentioned above, had a fully, had a fully engulfed structure fire on Royal Drive. Friendswood Public Works relentlessly ran down every leak and rupture to maintain our water and sewer services and Parks and Recs were all, all hands on deck for anything that was asked of them. And finally, normal trash pickup was restored and the worst of this disaster was ending. On February was restored, and the worst of this disaster was ending. On February twenty-first, the water boil mandate was lifted. That was just some of the stuff that was flying through uh uh the city and and just how proud I am of all those guys. I do want to mention, as I mentioned earlier, uh in regards to our power grid in Texas. Texas New Mexico Power and CenterPoint were unable to provide updates to the city of Friendswood regarding power restoration. Both groups blamed ERCOT. For transparency and just for clarification, ERCOT manages the flow of electric power to twenty-six million Texas customers representing ninety percent of the state's electric load. ERCOT is a membership-based five oh one C four nonprofit corporation governed by a board of directors and subject to oversight by the Public Utility Commission of Texas and the Texas Legislature. In my opinion, and only in my opinion solely, the criticism of and the epic fail by the Utility Commission of Texas and the Texas Legislature in its duty to proper oversight of this nonprofit corporation is warranted. Never again should Texas ever not be prepared for a freeze like we had. But I'm telling you what, under the circumstances, our men and women did some outstanding and wonderful things, and I'm just so proud of them. Thank you, and that's my report.
Robert?
Yeah.
Is there any I know that the the um expression of interest in being a candidate for city council and mayor open or position terms that are expiring is closed. Is there anything you can say on that?
Oh, uh with regards to Trish and Mayor Mike and who else and Steve Rocky, they are all set to be um recertified as as council members at our next meeting Monday. So they're good. So congratulate them. Next time you see them, pat them on the back. There was uh no one stepped up to run against them, and that was really a good thing. We've got a good group up there.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the detail. We really appreciate that.
You bet. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next are the staff updates. Aubrey?
Okay, um, so just the update on five oh one South Friendswood Drive, the Friendship Center. Um, we approved the site plan at our last meeting. Um, with the plans that were presented, um, there was further discussion that was had the day after our meeting um that I was not aware of that was going to take place. I don't think anybody knew. Um, so there are some negotiations on the table. Uh, city council will be considering some proposals in executive session on Monday night. They will not be deciding. It's a proposal that they will discuss. If they want to move forward, then it'll be on the April agenda uh for executive session. So um, that's.
The discussions are ongoing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If anything changes or needs to come back to you all, I will I will keep you informed and bring plans back if they need to come back. But as of right now, you know, our site plan that we approved um is still standing. I'll let you know if that changes. Um, the City Hall Essentials Land Use Fundamentals that was supposed to be on February eighteenth, they rescheduled another session for March fourth. Um, that's like nine to noon. Um, it's a really good group of uh attorneys that put those sessions on, and they're really, they're practical and easy to understand. So if anybody wants to attend that, let me know. It's virtual. Um, we can just sign you up, and you can attend from your own computer. Um, the April fourteenth through the sixteenth, University of Texas Land Use Conference, uh that is also coming up. Um, if you want to attend that, uh let me know that one. Also, I think we're getting they're letting they're providing group rates because everybody's attending virtually. So um we will plan on having that in our conference room up here. So if anybody wants to come up here and watch it with us, uh you're more than welcome. Um, I'm assuming when I register, like five people, that I can send that link to you so you could attend from your own computer if you need to. Um, but if you can't, if you can only attend one day of that, I would highly encourage you to attend the Wednesday, the fourteenth. Um, that's the basic land use fundamentals um from there. They cover really great information as well. Um, the fifteenth and sixteenth is more for attorneys and gets a little more detailed. Uh, but it's all great information. Um, so let me know on that.
When do you need to know by? Obviously, sooner is better, but.
Um, I was looking on their website. I think April ninth is like the last day to request a full refund. So and like I said, the group rates are like one to five people. Um, so if anything, I mean, like I said, we've got some leeway there. And um uh so our counts for damage assessment, so the community, my department, uh our involvement in the storm is after the fact. We go and do all the damage assessments. Um, so if it was a hurricane or a flood, you know, anything like that, we drive by as many structures as we can and kind of assess windshield assessments on damage. Um, so go we put a our GIS coordinator actually built a self-report app that we put out on Facebook so people could self-report their damage. Um, and then we also, there was a lot of calls that went into the EOC, so we were tracking all of those, and our inspectors went and drove by and verified. Um, this one, the as far as FEMA's definitions for damage affected is you had water damage in like a garage or non-living space and even the exterior pipes. Um, and then minor damage is up to um three inches, three or four inches inside the structure. So most of our damage was affected or minor, um, but we did have three-hundred-and-twelve uh property or residential homes that were damaged. Uh, a hundred and seventy-seven of those were minor and a hundred and thirty-five were affected. And we do have a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and eighty-four homes with debris in front of them, and they're going to start debris pickup on Monday. So.
Aubrey, did you mention the waiver of fees?
Yes, um, city council is going to be considering or an ordinance on Monday night to waive fees for any uh plumber repairs that need to be do be done as a result of the storm. Um, the building code does exempt like water leaks um from requiring permits, but if you have to get into replacing valves and different things like that, then a plumber may need to get a permit. We are going to waive those fees. Um, the churches had some damage with fire, um, their fire suppression systems. Um, so they're going to have to permit those to recharge and retest those. So uh we will waive their fees as well. And for six months. So.
Thank you. Becky? Mary Kay? Okay. With that, the February twenty-fifth planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting. Thank you.